Okay, the June meeting of the area planning commission. Don't worry, I have a real call, please.
Ryan Baker. Tammy Bolland. James Christman. Mark Lincolnbeard.
Here.
John Colette.
Here.
Jim Crawley. Jeff Ford. Norm Broderman.
Here.
Don Fult.
Here.
John Hanley.
Here.
Marcus Mauer.
Here.
Debbie May. William Berdine.
Here.
Fred Wilson.
Okay, we do have a four minute, everybody write. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands nation under God, individual and liberty, and just as strong. Thank you. Okay, I think everyone's had an opportunity to review the amendments and status of your order. Are there any corrections? Motion approved.
Second.
All favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is there any other comments I don't know about?
Nothing I'm aware of, no. Good evening, in addition to the submitted report there, you had an additional behind the flat committee report that is in your packets. I'd like to thank Devin and Jennifer who worked diligently on this. This is every update that we could find, every amendment that we could find, or I should say that they could find, redone and printed a brand new set of clean, clear updated bylaws for us. After the questions we had in this past meeting, I decided that would be a good time to sit down and review and incorporate all of the updates and all of the amendments that have been made into a nice, neat, clean copy for you guys to have. All the bylaws, yes.
What number is the public? Pass. That page of the progress.
Yeah, it's the, it's the majority, it is eight. They just simply say the majority. You, what, what he's talking about now, no one's back here. Right here. That's what he's talking about. Yes, that's the, they research the best they can tell us. With all the amendments and all. I hope we may know some things you don't.
I just read it tonight.
Good, I read, I read here also. Very nice.
So, what are you going to need to have that?
No, they're just, they're for you.
Just for you?
Yeah, it is, everything that's in there has already been passed, approved, and amended and changed, it's just a nice, clean, new copy for your records so that you have.
So you want us, younger people to peruse our memories so we, if something else out there, we don't feel bad?
If you see anything in there that you can recall that did not make the final draft of the updates and amendments, then yes, please let us know, we're sure to.
Any other questions? Motion for approval.
Second.
All favor, aye.
Aye.
Sure. So Jared and I did go to Raleigh, North Carolina, to the, the national conference, and there's a little bit in here, but we'll give you much more detail next month. But the main thing is this handout you guys have, this is from our most recent meeting with FEMA. They are remapping every county in Illinois and Indiana along the Wabash River. So, everyone is getting, will be getting, new flood maps, official flood maps, they will be adopting all of the Indiana best available floodplain, and will become eventually effective. So.
Did they give us the maps?
No. We have no draft maps yet, they were supposed to come out weeks ago, but we still have yet to see them.
I know this is a little bit off subject, but what happened up north that that area was state side of the whole floodplain?
They removed it.
They removed it?
They ended up sending people down to actually look at it, and they saw that there was no actual source of flooding, so they took it off.
Wow, that's a big concept.
Yeah. So that was a very good result, but, so we're in the process, we're supposed to be getting draft maps soon, FEMA will be coming through to do the whole, their whole thing that they do before they do new effective maps, they are going to have public meetings, I'm guessing we're going to get new maps sometime 2025 is probably what's going to happen.
So, I understand that once it appears, all of you know about Honey Creek?
Honey Creek, they did not even mention Honey Creek in this meeting, they talked about levies that are, are going through re-creditation, they did mention the West Terre Haute levy in particular, but they, they didn't talk about that specifically, and I haven't gotten any further updates since the last one I gave you guys.
Well, I mean, here's the thing, I mean, as you all know, it kind of, couldn't, but I, I understand there's a little bit of a problem with getting Honey Creek out of the flood zone, that's right.
I don't think there's necessarily a problem, I think it's going forward, it's just a process of, the engineering company responds to FEMA, and then FEMA has ninety days to respond, and they, they respond with a list of more things they want, and then Honey Creek Conservancy has ninety days to respond, and it's going back and forth until all of FEMA's expectations are met.
Well, I've been contacted by some people that are wanting to build, and again, five foot of elevation which will turn into zero, it goes through, and then I heard there was a problem with figuring out how to block a couple of roads that don't, got that solved.
Oh yeah, yeah, I know, I, they're hoping to be here, but eighteen months, I think, whatever.
Okay, but.
It seems to be going forward.
Yes.
As you all know, you know, chairman of two Conservancy Districts, we work hard, give force improvement in place, I'm a little worried, maybe we're going to lose this, and that would be a bad fact.
Yeah, no, the biggest issue that they see is there are a few areas that they're going to work on this year that have to be raised maybe four or five inches, and then the roads will have to, will have to have a plan to sandbag the roads, it's, you know, it's.
I think it's mostly technical issues in there.
Yeah, that's pretty good. We possibly could on South First Street, that's what we, we talked about that, that would be a good idea, the rest of them, probably not.
Okay, is there anything else?
Um, no, that's all, so hopefully, hopefully we'll get those draft maps, we'll let you know when they do officially release those, they haven't done Migo County yet.
It'll be interesting to see what they can do. Okay, need approval.
Second. Sorry.
Okay, flat committee.
No.
Any other communications received? Any communication other than our agenda items that we wouldn't know about?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Okay, first item is under subdivisions, minor primary, secondary document number thirty-nine file twenty-one thousand twenty-three, white subdivision.
The property is commonly associated with fifteen fifteen north stop eighteen, one new lot, one five three seven acres, surveyor's Mr. Coleman, the applicant is requesting to subdivide the five point three seven acres to create one new lot for residential development. Health department review is pending, though the applicant will be using sanitary sewer. Public sewer is available, sewer is not provided by the city of Terre Haute, it's of course not in the airport overlay, public water is available, it's not the flood zone, lot exceeds the minimum lot size requirement, north stop eighteen is a local level roadway at that location, and stormwater drainage is of course not required with a minor subdivision. Forty foot easement has been planted for access to the new lot, the approval of the lot is contingent being recorded within ninety days, we offer favorable recommendation with health department approval.
Anything you'd like to add, or any questions you have? Cut that, any questions for the planning, anyone speaking in opposition?
Motion for approval.
Cut second. All favor, aye.
Aye.
Next item, document number forty five twenty-two thousand twenty-three, ground acres.
The property is fronted along Brunner Street and is being divided from property with a common address of one zero four three zero south US Highway forty-one, one new lot, three point three one acres, to surveyor's Mr. Keller, the applicant is requesting to subdivide three point three one acres for residential development, a variance has been requested. Health department has approved, public sewer is not available, septic system will need, be needed, it's not in the airport overlay, public water is not available, this is in the Sullivan Vega Rural Water District, it's not in the flood zone, lot exceed the minimum lot size requirement, Brunner Street is considered local level roadway, stormwater drainage is not required with minor subdivisions, staff has no major concerns with the subdivision, originally the property was surveyed and transferred based on legal, a legal description, the failure to abide by the applicable subdivision law is an impediment to using land for residential construction and resulted in an unimproved, non-villable piece of ground, unless approved, the described property would not be a legal lot of record, rather just a taxable parcel described within a parent tract, approval of the subdivision will convey the villable rights for residential construction to the property. A variance of scale has been requested due to the large area involved, staff is of the opinion that the requested variance will not be injurious to the public health, safety, morals, convenience, or general welfare of the community, the value of the area adjacent to the property included in the variance will not be affected in a substantially adverse manner, the strict application of the terms of this ordinance have resulted in unnecessary hardship excluding financial reasons in the use of the property, therefore staff recommends favorably on the variance request, the approval of the plot is contingent of being recorded within ninety days, we offered a favorable recommendation again on the variance as well as on the flat.
Okay, Mr. President, anything you want to add, or any questions? Question?
Motion for approval.
Next item is document forty-three thousand twenty-five thousand twenty-three acre.
The property is fronted along Green Castle Road, commonly associated with ninety-four twenty-three Green Castle Road, two new lots, surveyor's Mr. Tolles, the applicant is requesting to subdivide ten point one acres creating two lots for residential dwellings, lot two already has an existing dwelling, health department is still pending, public sewer is not available, septic system must be utilized, public water is not available, and is not in the flood zone, the lots do exceed the minimum lot size requirement, Green Castle Road is a secondary collector roadway at this location, and stormwater drainage is not required with a minor subdivision, approval of the plot is contingent of being recorded in ninety days, the additional of, the addition of one new home should not overburden the existing infrastructure at the location, we offer a favorable recommendation with a road cut permit if needed, and health department approval.
Okay, Mr. President, anything you want to add, or any questions? Any questions from the planning? Anyone speaking in opposition? Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion approved. Aye.
Next item is under subdivisions, with counting rezonings, document forty-four, file twenty-six two thousand twenty-three, K nine, K nine point five, one lot subdivision.
As the subdivision does have a zoning associated with it, would you like them heard concurrently?
Sure.
Do you want them heard concurrently?
Sure.
The property is commonly known as thirty-five oh one Erie Canal Road, or specifically the one new lot is in the rear of the property, one point three acres, surveyor's Mr. Coleman, the request is to subdivide the one point three acres for commercial development, health department has approved, sanitary is a sewer, is available and must be utilized, no new public roads, public water is not available, we did hear back from the fire department, there are no hydrants within fifteen hundred feet, water will have to be shuttled for fire suppression, which entails backing down the access road or being able to turn around if enough space has been provided, the fire department has requested more information. It's not in flood zone, the lot exceeds the minimum lot size requirement, Erie Canal Road is a primary, primary arterial roadway with a proposed right-of-way width of eighty to one hundred feet at that location, stormwater drainage will be required with the major subdivision, the petitioner is requesting the subdivision for construction of a new building to be used as a dog training facility, the proposed use will require rezoning and approval from the county board of zoning appeals, the new lot being in the rear of the property is served by a twenty-foot easement for ingress, egress, so we offer a favorable on the primary and secondary request with the following conditions, road cut permit if needed, drainage and erosion control plan approval, bonding for infrastructure if needed, fire department approval, record within ninety days, the rezoning approval, and approval for the special use by the county board of zoning appeals, onto the rezoning, which is usey O seven of twenty-three, property owner ECR Properties LLC, and we know where the property is located, behind thirty-five oh one Erie Canal Road, it's currently zoned C two community commercial district, the proposed zoning C seven general commercial district, for the proposed use of a new dog boarding, training, and grooming facility, no new address has been assigned to the property just yet, this area has been identified as a neighborhood enhancement area, with the development priority being medium intensity residential, the area is a mix of uses, the surrounding uses are to the north and west, R two M, to the south is RS, and which is a legal non-conforming use, and to the east is OS or open space. As we know, the petitioners have requested a change of rezoning to allow for the placement of a dog training facility, subdivision of the property and board of zoning appeal requests have also been filed with proposed use, buffering along the south will not be needed, the current use is a legal non-conforming concrete and masonry business, and is not residential in nature, the petitioners have applied for relief of the non-hard surfacing to continue the use of the natural landscape in the buffer where the residential joins, and a special exception to use, special exception use to allow for outside runs. Erie Canal Road is considered primary arterial roadway with the expectation of heavy traffic counts, commercial development is expected along major thoroughfares, parking is not indicated on the site plan, parking equalling or, equalling or exceeding three stalls plus one per employee is required, we'll offer a favorable recommendation for the rezoning request with the following conditions, board of zoning appeals approval for the non-hard surfacing, landscape and buffer plan where residential joins, and special exception use to allow outside runs, approval of the major subdivision, and revision of the site plan to meet or exceed the minimum parking standards.
Okay, the petitioner is present, is there anything you'd like to add, or any questions you have? Okay, any questions from the planning? Anyone speaking in opposition?
Good evening, my name is Robert Roberts, I'm here on behalf of Gene Vivert, who is the property owner and residential, the first residence north of the property that's under discussion here today, not necessarily in opposition, but just wanting to maybe get some additional answers to what is being proposed, first off, we know that there's no gas and water utilities in that area, so we're wondering how that's going to be utilized, currently for the residential property that my mother lives on, that is well water, and obviously another business in that area without additional utility, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. And so, obviously, another business in that area could impact the, the water levels for the wells in that area, we're wondering what preparations because of the nature of the proposed use, being both a dog training facility and a kennel, what will be utilized to dampen the noise for those residences, both private as well as the apartments that are in that area, and specifically wondering what the, where the, where the location on this property, that the structure may be, and are there, is this just going to be indoor training, or will there be outdoor training that will be utilized on the property as well, so, just some additional questions that would help us to better.
This may help, unless you've seen that, you can come up and get it, it at least answers the last one, where are they proposed to build the building?
So. That's your brother's house?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Correct, the question was gas and, gas and water hookups in that area, and, so then noise level and, and then obviously the odors that are associated with it, what are the plans for, for taking care of waste?
All right, my name's Larry Hopper, this is Mike Ellsworth and Dave Bagwell, this is who we're buying the property from, so, I'm going to try to answer your questions, Rob, as, as you had asked them, as far as the, and you got a paper, you got the paper there as far as where the building should be located? Okay, as far as the well, the water, I spoke with Kelly Fisher, he digs wells, he, just, just by talking to him on the phone, he said that he believes this is the area where, I'm not sure what you call it, where it's basically a huge reservoir underneath this area, where there's plenty. Is that true? That's what I was told, that's what I was told too. Okay, all right.
Jones and Sons aren't on City Water at all?
Yeah. As far as the noise, so, we have budgeted in with our budget as far as inside the facility, noise panels, baffles, that, that go inside, and I think probably more importantly with that would, would be with training dogs and boarding dogs, so this is just not a, just a grooming or a, or a boarding place, this is a training place, and the psychology behind the training of the dogs, if we, if you train a dog, you keep them active, you keep them engaged, you basically, at, at the end of the day, they're, these dogs are worn out, this is not going to be a facility where it's just boarding, you know, you drop your dog off and, and that's it, we're working with these dogs, even if they're not being trained with us, we're still going to engage these dogs in activities during the day as they're there. You're worried about the nighttime? Well, I, I can say. You're exactly right. Yes. We, yes ma'am, yeah, we are, it's, it's budgeted in, we have the quote that we sent to the bank, that will be in the kennel area, as far as the outside runs, the outside runs will not be open during the night. Yeah. Right. Yeah. In the wintertime? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but you're exactly right, I can't sit here and say the dogs can be dogs and they won't bark, but I do know that the more that you engage with a dog, and you, you challenge them, you exercise them, then they're feeling fulfilled at the end of the day. Absolutely, yeah, yeah. So there's, so we're doing a, originally with our plan, what we were going to do, we were going to do drains on the inside, and we went to look at a facility up north in Valparaiso, and I asked the owner about drains, and he said, well, why would you put drains inside, and I said, well, why wouldn't you put drains inside, and he said, well, what happens is, you're going to, you're going to wash all that stuff down the drain, you're not going to get it washed out, so it's going to start to smell, so what he has in his facility, and we budgeted into our plan, is, it's like a all-in-one home vacuum type system, so it sprays and it sucks at the same time, right, and it goes to one central, centralized location, then, then goes into the sewer range, so that's the inside, the inside, as far as the outside, we're going to, we would treat your dogs like we, you would treat them at home, it's going to be picked up, put into a trash bag, and into dump. We, yeah, we're, so it's going to be a, we're building a sixty-six kennel facility, the building's about just shy of ten thousand square feet. We're right to the west of them.
Well, there's, there's sewer there, and Jones and Sons, well, Jones and Sons use a massive metal wall in the right next to that property, and, you know, I suppose at the end of the day, they take the risk if they don't have a well already, if they have a problem, of course, if they don't have water, they do.
Trails edge apartments?
Huh?
Trails edge apartments is operated entirely off of a well.
Yeah, see around here, they operate off of a well. See, and, see, and I don't know why, off, off my memory, but I would suspect that it might be a case of that's their requirement, to be on city water.
Didn't know anything possible.
You don't know, because, you know, there's a lot of places in this county using off the water, and there probably nobody uses groundwater either, out of wells, okay? Yeah, and I don't want to make light of your concerns, but I think. Yeah, and I don't want to make light of your concerns, but I think, I think they'll probably. And Ron, is this, take your turn. Is this anything? Well, you know, we'd all like things done and changed sometimes. Okay. Is there anything new to somebody else? You good, Ron?
I think we are.
Okay. Well, I've got a list of about thirty questions. I don't think any of them had to be what they asked. Do we have a motion?
So move for approval.
Second, a vote?
Second. Yes.
All favor on?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, the last item is document number forty-one, filed twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three, Snow Hill two lot.
Or Snow Hill two? Snow Hill two, sub six lot, yes. The property is commonly associated with six hundred Dirk East Ferry Road, thirty-three point eight eight acres. Surveyors, Mr. Campbell. The request is to subdivide the parent tract of thirty-three point six one acres into six lots for residential development. Health department is still pending their review. Sanitary sewer is not available. Dirk East Ferry is considered a local level road at this location. Public water is available and must be utilized. It's not in a flood zone. Lots do exceed the minimum lot size requirement. There will be no new proposed public streets. And stormwater drainage is typically required with a major subdivision. Lots four, five, and six will be accessed by a new private drive. This will maximize the number of lots available on a private drive. There is an existing home on Mount Three that utilizes a separate private drive. Lots two and one have direct access to Dirk East Ferry Road. The plant notes that the septic drainage easements, they all drain to a large valley south of lots one through five. And due to the use and size of the proposed lots, staff does request a waiver of most of the major subdivision requirements in favor of the minor subdivision development standards. We do offer a favorable on the primary and secondary with the following conditions. A road cut permit if needed. Record within ninety days and health department approval.
Okay, so petition for present. Anything you want to add? Okay. Any questions from the planning commission? Have a motion?
Motion for approval.
All favor on?
Aye.
I'm not opposed to this, sir.
So move.
Second, all favor on?
Aye.